Roll call. All councilors are present. Calendar and communications. Councilor Moravsek.
I went to a seat meeting last week.
Councilor Parker?
No report.
No report. Councilor Heed?
We had a town council personnel and appointments committee meeting. Rita, sorry, my apologies. Councilor Schmidt and Councilor Moravsek were present and we nominated Patrick Flaherty for the harbor management commission, so that'll be coming to the town council.
Thank you. Councilor O'Bri.
I went to a meeting of all this home. I don't know if you've, it used to be called MASH. And they are doing their main fundraiser, so if anybody has an interest, they could go online and learn more about it. It's gonna be quite an evening.
Councilor Atwater?
I guess in honor of Earth Day, I had quite a week for meetings. I went to the Southeast Connecticut Regional Resource Recovery Authority, which is a consortium of towns that do the recycling. And I learned that our tipping rate at the transfer station is at $58 a ton, soon to go to $66 a ton. So that, to me, seems like a reason to recycle and not have all that trash. And the other thing I did was I went to the Yukon at Avery Point dedication for proclamation for Earth Day. The Echo Husky Club invited us and the mayor had a proclamation declaring April 19th as Earth Day in Groton.
Councilor Schmidt?
I've had several people contact me about the Board of Education and the fact that they get a grant from the federal government that goes directly to the board and goes into a savings account. So they wanted to get more information on that.
I have no report.
No report. I attended, I had three days off this week from teaching, yay. So I attended the joint land use study, which was very interesting. And we had people, Captain White Spiver was here and people from the base and people from neighboring communities. So it was interesting to hear what was going on with that. I attended the Pequot Woods annual meeting of the trustees. And if any councilors are interested in walking Pequot Woods, they have openings every month. They have trustees walk through the woods and take notes on wildlife there and you submit them and then they compile it. And Mr. Berry will be posting everything online. I attended the New London Homeless Hospitality Center Walk to End Homelessness, along with RTM member Richards was in attendance. And Groton resident Barbara Nagy is very active in that cause. And this evening, I had the pleasure of attending Director Fondulus's calendar presentation where they have the third graders in the town of Groton do drawings on child abuse prevention. And tonight was the night where they unveiled them all. So it was very nice to be there with all the little third graders. It was kinda fun. All right. Mr. Burt, do you have any communications?
No.
And we are on to approval of minutes 2018-0099. Councilor Moravsek?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Moravsek, seconded by O'Bri. Is there any discussion on the minutes?
Couldn't find any mistakes.
No mistakes, that's great. Yeah, there's a weird buzzing. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Unfinished business, I don't think we have any unfinished business at this point. So we are on to new business. And we have 2018-01-02 through 2018-01-06 that we all have to get through with Finance Director Landry. So items 102, 103, 104, and 105 are attachment one in your packet, if you need to refer Did you want to address us before we start? I keep trying to back away as well.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the tentative tax rates that you'll be setting as well as adopting the budgets. As you know, the town manager had presented a budget which was a six and a half percent increase over the fiscal '17 budget, excuse me, the fiscal '18 budget, which would have required a 1.24 mil rate increase. And now that the council has reviewed the budget and has made some reductions to it, it now represents a 4.2% increase and would require an increase of .65 of a mil. And that was $2.6 million. And the mil rates that I've calculated do not use any fund balance. And once the council approves the tentative tax rates, the budget will move on to the RTM. Once the RTM has made any adjustments that they deem necessary, we will come back in June to set the final mil rates on or before June 9th. So I have sent, I have, you have the three mil rate calculations attached and you also have some attachments, the resolutions and some reconciliation between the general fund, the manager to the council, and also for the capital reserve fund. And you will see on the general fund, you'll see the reductions of 2.7 million and additions of 35,000. And then there was a late reduction of 5,000 on the 14th that equates to the $2.6 million reduction. So now it stands from the 128 million to 125.9. And the second reconciliation was for the capital projects. It started out with a $3 million list. There were the one increase for the website and there were several decreases, bringing it down to the general fund projects of 2.7. The water pollution control will fund the projects of 731. So the total projects approved for '19 would be $3.5 million. And the third page is the comparison by function, which will show you the '18 adjusted, the request, the manager, and the councils, and then the adjustments from the managers to the council, both in dollars and percentage. And you'll see it's now down to a 5.1 million or 4.2% increase. So if anyone has any questions?
Other questions? So this is, this is not the final mil rate. We have to wait and see what the RTM does with the budget. If they make any adjustments, then it comes back to us when they're done. And at that point, then, we set the mil rate based on what the RTM does. At that point, if we also chose to, we could decide if we wanted to spend any fund balance to apply to try to keep the mil rate down, or if we chose not to do that. And I think we have recommendations in our paperwork from the finance director as far as what she views from her role as to what would be wise to do. Are there questions for Director Landry? Councilor Zepary?
Not so much in regard to what you're presenting now, but in the future, can we have reports of just what we appropriated and how much of it has been spent on a periodic basis?
Sure.
For each appropriation?
Right. I try to present that to you on a quarterly basis.
Okay.
Other questions or comments that you wanted to make at this point? Mr. Burt, did you want to say anything?
No. Nothing at this point.
Okay. So then what we have, there are four resolutions. Right. So if we go-
The first one is adopting the budgets. And then you'll have resolution one, setting the mil rate for the general fund, Mumford Cove, Special Taxing District, and the sewer district.
So we are on attachment one, which has 1, 2, 20, 102, let me see. 102, 103, 104, and 105, and 106, they're all in the back there. Is everyone, where are we at? So then, Councilor Parker, we can start with the first one for 2018-01-02, if you're ready to go. It's attachment one, right after the-
The top one, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution approving budgets for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2018 and ending June 30th, 2019. Resolve that the budgets for the various funds herein act are set forth are hereby approved and adopted, and the amounts on the total appropriation line are hereby appropriated for the function specified, and the amounts listed under the heading financing plan are hereby established as approved budget estimates for the type of revenues specified and include all estimated FYE 2019. Cash revenues except FYE 2019 current property taxes, which will be estimated for budget purposes by separate resolution when the FYE 2019 tax rate is set. And further, that a complete detailed document indicating all function appropriations is hereby made a part of this record and shall be submitted to the town clerk for public record for budgets as follows. General fund, golf course fund, sewer operating fund, solid waste fund, Mumford Cove, special taxing district, revaluation fund, recreation and senior activities fund, Borrow It CT, sewer district fund, capital reserve fund, fleet reserve fund, technology replacement fund, and human services assistance fund. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Moravsek. Is there a discussion or comments on this? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution 2018-01-02 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Councilor Franco, 2018-01-03, please.
Is that the one we were allowing?
Yes.
All right. Resolution computing a tentative tax rate for year 2019 to pay expenses appropriations approved in the general fund budget as adopted by the town council. Whereas the town council adopted on April 24th, 2018, a general fund budget providing for expenditures appropriations for expenses totaling $125,944,450, and estimated cash revenues exclusive for year 2019, current property taxes totaling $38,32,060. Be it resolved that the tax rate of 24.28 mils is hereby determined as required by chapter six?
Nine.
Nine? Of the Groton Town Charter and based on the following computations. Total general fund appropriations per budget provided by council, $125,944,450, less general fund cash receipts exclusive for year 2019. Current property taxes, $38,32,060, less the amount to be appropriated by the unassigned fund balance, $0, amount to be raised from property taxes, $87,912,390. Amount computed as following, $87,912,390 divided by the new assessed valuation after Board of Assessment adjustments to, is that, $3,697,211,091 divided by 98.4% collection rate multiplied by 1,000 equals 24.28 mil rate. I so move.
Moved by Franco.
Second.
Seconded by Heed. Any discussion on 2018-01-03? Councilor Zepary?
I noticed that there is nothing applied from the unassigned fund balance. What is the unassigned fund balance balance?
It's approximately about $11 million.
And why is nothing assigned from that?
Our fund balance, recently the council had made an, had increased the debt lim, excuse me, the debt policy to say, we had a minimum fund balance of seven and three quarters and we have, that has been raised to a minimum of 11% with the goal of getting to 15%. Our fund balance is extremely low compared to our peers. And when we went through the bond readings, at least two of them had mentioned that 11% would be a marginal minimum balance. So the opportunity to increase our fund balance is not likely to come again. And my recommendation would be not to use fund balance this year because we don't know what may happen in future years with state revenue.
What is the fund balance now in terms of a percentage of the budget?
It was about, I think it's maybe 9%. I'm not 100% sure. I didn't bring that with me, I apologize.
Did you, what did you say was in there now, 15 million?
11 million.
11 million.
That was the June 30th of balance.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That is, that is something that we can address after the RTM does their thing. We have the option, when we come back to set the mil rate, at that point, we can decide if you want to spend any fund balance or not. But that is, she just laid out her recommendation and the rationale for the recommendation. Are there other councilors who have questions or comments? Councilor Schmidt?
Well, I would just like to point out that although we had to go up 4.2%, that the mil rate is still extremely low when you compare Groton with the other 169 municipalities in Connecticut. So although it is something that we've had to stretch upwards, it's still something that is of great value.
Are there other comments or questions? Seeing none, we will vote on 2018-01-03. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Councilor Heed, 2018-01-04, which is at the top of the next page.
Resolution computing a tentative tax rate for fiscal year ending 2019 to pay expenses appropriations approved in the Mumford Cove Special Taxing District Fund budget as adopted by the town council. Whereas the town council adopted on April 24th, 2018, a Mumford Cove District Fund budget providing for expenditures appropriations or expenses totaling $21,043, and estimate cash revenue exclusive of FYE 2019, current property taxes totaling zero. Resolve that a tax rate of 0.34 mils is hereby determined as required by chapter nine of the Groton Town Charter and based on the following computations. Total Mumford Cove District Fund appropriations per budget approved by council, $21,043. Less estimated amount to be appropriated from unassigned fund balance, $0. Less cash receipts, exclusive of current property taxes, $0. Amount to be raised from property taxes, $21,043. Amount as computed as follows, $21,043 divided by net assessed valuation of $62,523,482 after Board of Assessment adjustments divided by 99.7% collection rate multiplied by 1,000 equals 0.34 mils. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Heed, seconded by Moravsek. Is there a discussion on the Mumford Cove tax rate? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. 2018-01-05, which is right below that, this is for the Groton Sewer District, please. Councilor O'Bri.
Resolution computing a tentative tax rate for the FYE 2019 to pay expenses appropriations approved by, approved in the Groton Sewer District Fund budget as adopted by the town council. Whereas the town council adopted on April 24th, 2018, a Groton Sewer District Fund budget providing for expenditures appropriations or expenses totaling $803,445, and estimated cash reserve exclusive of FYE 2019, current property taxes totaling $14,500. Be it resolved that a tax rate of 0.27 mils is hereby determined as required by chapter nine of the Groton Town Charter and based on the following computations. Total Groton Sewer District Fund appropriation per budget approved by council, $803,45. Less estimated amount to be appropriated from unassigned fund balances, $150,000, less cash receipts exclusive of current property taxes, $14,500. Amount to be raised from property taxes, $638,945. Amount computed as follows. $638,945 divided by net assessed value of $2,389,556,248 after Board of Assessments adjustment and excludes motor vehicles divided by the 99.0% collection rate multiplied by 1,000 equaling 0.27 mils. I so move.
Second.
Moved by O'Bri, seconded by Atwater. Is there discussion on the Groton Sewer District mil rate? Councilor Zepary?
I understand we are considering moving ahead with a usage-based sewer tax rather than a property-based sewer tax. How will that relate to this?
No. Councilor Heed?
That's the city of Groton, not the town.
Are there any other questions or discussion?
Might be a good idea if we all did it the same way.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of 2018-01-05 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. So we are on to attachment two. And this is 2018-01-06, a resolution setting the RTM annual meeting date for the FYE 2019 town budget. Councilor Atwater, please.
Resolution setting RTM annual meeting date for the fiscal year ending 2019 town budget. The town council needs to set the RTM annual meeting for Charter Section 9.4 on or before May 3rd, 2017? Is that correct?
It should be 18.
Should be 18, yes.
Should be 18, okay. The RTM moderator, Sima Eben, has requested that the town council set the RTM annual meeting for April 30th, 2018 at the Groton Senior Center, starting at 7:00 PM. Please add this to the special town council meeting agenda scheduled for April 24th, 2018. I so move.
Second. So Councilor Atwater recommends this for resolution, seconded by Councilor Schmidt. Is there any discussion on this? This is as for the charter, we have to set the budget date for them. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of setting the annual meeting date for the RTM budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Thank you, Director Landry.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Since it is not 7, can we start the other meeting?
No. You're reading the clock.
Who is that?
Betsy.
Betsy. The town clerk. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I knew I recognized that voice. All right. So at 7 o'clock, we need to adjourn to do a council meeting. So let's, the next item on the agenda is 2017-0226. Superintendent of Groton Public Schools update, this is our standing referral from Dr. Brinier. Welcome back.
Get the tea in.
Andrew has been ready. Thank you. So we can get our normal update and then I'm sure we have questions about other things that are going on.
Well, I wanted to fill you in that, as you know, both of our middle schools have been, the plans have been laid to be converted to magnet schools for the fall. And on April 10th, we actually had our lottery. Forty-eight children from Westside have, were selected essentially to go to Cutler and 22 children have opted to go from Cutler. I'm talking primarily current fifth graders. The current sixth graders and the current seventh graders, as you probably could imagine, didn't really want to change schools. A few did, but not very many. But the fifth graders, we had a fair number, and we also had a fair number of students who don't currently go to our schools. Students who attend regional magnet schools and also private schools have come back and put in for the lottery. So we are in the process of notifying those families. And pure, pure sort of dumb luck, the Westside class, the homed or districted for Westside was 36 students larger than the class that, fifth grade, the current fifth grade class that was districted for Cutler. So when we actually made the 48 to 22 switch, it came out, assuming everybody accepts their position in the lottery, it actually came out 172 students would go to one sixth grade class and 172 students would go to the other sixth grade class. So we're really excited about that. The other thing I wanted you to know is that about 20% of the slots that we essentially pulled out of a hat, electronic hat, were for highly mobile students. So we, we have several slots for students who have not yet moved into the district, primarily military students. So what will happen, military dependents, what will happen is on the 22nd of August, we'll, we'll have a sort of a mini lottery for the children who recently moved in and want to participate in one of the schools. So Cutler, I think I explained, will become an arts and humanities school and Fitch will become a STEM school.
Westside.
We, we-
Westside.
Westside. What did I say, Fitch?
Fitch.
Yeah, okay. That's a whole other story. We're applying for that grant too. Thank you for correcting me, though. The, the second thing I wanted to tell you about is that tomorrow, we actually have a, a meeting of several teachers and parents are coming to help us pick the themes for the two new elementary schools. So there'll, there'll be an elementary school at the site of Cutler and an elementary school at the site at Westside. We don't know yet what the themes are going to be. So this little committee is going to put together, we've already identified about a dozen themes. We're going to try to narrow that down and then we'll conduct a survey of the parents to, to determine what each of the themes will be. The, the pressure is, the architects are asking us, or the permanent building committee is, is asking us to identify the theme so that we could build the school to accommodate that theme. So we've been, as you know, we've been working hard on the middle school, but now we have to turn our attention, because all three projects, the middle school and the two elementary schools, have to begin construction by October of 19. So we, we realize we have to move, move ahead on, on that. And the, the other thing I want to tell you about is, I had a meeting that perhaps you got a little bit of word of with Congressman Courtney. There's, there's a proposal that he was concerned with and I was very concerned with, that a voucher would be provided to military dependent children so that they could take, take the voucher and, and attend a school so long as it wasn't a public school in, in the area. And my, my thought was initially that we provide lots of opportunities, we pay the tuition for lots of military dependents to attend a variety of schools in the area. But the, I think it was a $1,500 voucher, all that would come out of our impact aid. That, that's what was going to pay for it. So the 3.2, 3.3 million dollar grant that we would receive would, would, would be diminished, potentially significantly. So Congressman Courtney asked me to write a letter, which I did, and forwarded that to him to oppose this, what could be a really significant reduction to our, to our funding. And then the last thing, I know that, because I spoke to Council Franco today, some people had some questions about the water quality concerns and I'd be happy to answer them. And I actually asked Mr. Kilpatrick to, to come in. So feel free, I think I, I think I understand the concern and of course share the concern. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
So just before we start, I know Councilor Parker had questions and I know Councilor Franco wants to ask questions as well. I just wanted to again thank, thank you and the board for working with us and the town manager and Director Landry to come in, bring in the MBR for the town and to use your unassigned balances to cover the increase. So thank you very much for doing that. That's appreciated by everybody. Councilor Parker had a question about what you were talking about earlier?
The construction?
Yes.
Are we rebuilding the schools? Or is that, what was the goal?
We hadn't, we hadn't heard back. That was a question I had for you.
You know, I'm going to ask Mr. Kilpatrick, who's on the permanent building committee, would you read my notepad, you know that note stuff that I had? My understanding is, but Sam can, can clarify it, that that decision has actually not yet been made. My understanding is, we are under an obligation to determine which would be cheaper to, to build new or renovate. And it's not exactly a slam dunk, because even to renovate, because there's so many materials in our schools that are considered hazardous, that once you start to renovate, like around the windows, for example, you have to remove so much of the brick that it starts to become actually potentially less expensive to build a new school. So- So if we can establish with the Department of Administrative Services that it is less expensive to build new, I believe they will authorize that.
That's correct.
Okay.
And.
One more question, sir?
They don't have, when's the tentative date of when they'll have a decision?
There is no date at this time. They're working as quickly as they can.
Councilor O'Bree.
Does it affect what we get if we build versus redoing?
Yeah. Well, the middle school obviously is going to be new. The school that will be at the Cutler site, because it was, it is classified as a diversity school, replacing a school that was out of racial balance a couple of times, that will be reimbursed at 80%, whether it's new or renovated as new. So the only question is, the Westside, the facility at Westside. And so, yes, it's a 10% differential. I think our reimbursement rate is 47% for new and 57% for, 57% for new, 47%. No, I'm sorry. The incentive is 57% if you renovate, 47% if it's new. The trick with the new is, we can build new sooner. So part of the economics of all of this is, if we got, if we get to go ahead to build a new school at the Westside site, we could actually start building it very soon, while the children are still in Westside. As opposed to obviously, if we have to renovate, we have to wait for the whole middle school to be built. And that two, two-and-a-half-year delay could actually send the price so high that even though we're only going to get 47% reimbursement, as opposed to 57%, it would actually be cheaper.
Okay, thank you.
So the decision whether to renovate or build new is between the Permanent School Building Committee and Department of Administrative Services?
Yes. But I think that determination will be made by the architects.
Okay. Because if we're working on a drop-dead date of October 2019, that's going to have to be done pretty soon so that the architects can finalize their plans.
Yes.
So that's of concern to us. Councilor Morosik?
The cost of demolition, is that going to be out of that 47%?
I think the answer is, I know about 47%, but I know it's part of the project. So yeah, I think the answer is yes.
I'm not positive whether that's part of the reimbursable rate or not. I think it might be in addition to the project, but that would be included in their estimate as to whether to build new or to renovate as new.
Okay, what I think, what we are going to do at this point is, we will adjourn, because we're at 7:00 now, we'll adjourn cow temporarily.
Not adjourn, recess.
Excuse me?
Recess.
Recess cow. And then go into the council meeting that we're scheduled to have at 7:00, get that taken care of, and then come back, if you don't mind, because I have a feeling the next thing we're going to talk about is going to take quite a bit of time.
Okay.
So thank you very much. So I will take a motion, well, I'm going to send us into recess at 7:03? 7:04? We're in recess. Recession, and it is 7:22. And Dr. Grineer and Mr. Kilpatrick are still with us, so if you would please come back, that would be wonderful. So I know there were some questions about a CIP that we dealt with last week, and we've been working to get information. And Dr. Grineer forwarded some test results and some floor plans to us today. So I think we'll probably have some questions on the floor plans and maybe the test results. And then we have some information to share as far as looking for resources, other pots of money other than town funds. And so we have people working on that as well. And we need to talk about improving communication so that everybody's on the same page and everybody's aware of what's going on, and that especially includes the people that are in the buildings as well. So, Dr. Grineer, did you want to address anything to start with? Or would you just like us to begin with our clarifications?
Yeah, no, I'm fine. Go ahead.
Okay. So. Ask for clarifications, all right. So does anyone have questions? Councilor Franco, would you like to start?
Since we last talked to Sam, there's been some information that came out. And from what I'm understanding up at Fitch, the, on the map that you had given, and the red dot, is where the fountain is located, that tested positive.
That's right.
The two restrooms behind that, from what I'm understanding, the sinks have not, were not turned off.
That's correct.
So are you going to shut the water off on those sinks?
No. We need to use those facilities as bathroom facilities. But after talking to you today, I checked to see if there's signage, and I will check tomorrow. If there's not signage, we'll make it very clear that the water should not be, that water should not be consumed. Although we don't have, I mean, I guess one could presume that it is the exact same pipe, although we're not sure about that. But I think it would be appropriate, we just ordered last week, actually, retesting of all the schools. We're going to start with, of course, the high school and Clodchester. But until we get positive results, positive, affirmative results, clear results, we'll make sure that there's signage there that indicates that water should not be consumed for drinking purposes.
Have you notified the teachers and the staff in the school? And the students that there's issues with those sinks?
Not that I.
That were not turned off?
Well, not specifically, and that's why I think we need to do the signage.
Okay. I spoke to our state representative, Chris Conley, today. She said there are funds available, that she's told you about. I believe it's Curry and Costa that you can get money. You discussed this with her?
Well, sort of. I actually had a subsequent conversation with Representative, Senator Summers. And she actually identified, first you have to figure out where the source of the contamination is. If the water coming to you is contaminated, there are state funds that are eligible, or that we could apply for, to fix that. But if the water that is coming to you, and in this case it is, the water that we're getting from Groton Public Utilities, is clear, then that source of money, Senator Summers said, was the state source, not available. So it's the question of where the, in this case, where the lead is coming from. So we would, as Senator Summers said, basically that becomes a school issue or a town issue financially.
So how, what are you going to do to find out where the lead is coming from? I mean, it's all in concrete, isn't it?
Yeah, well, yes. Let me back up. As I, I'm not sure what I explained last week, but in 2016, in the spring of 2016, there was a nationwide concern about Flint, Michigan. And so we decided, not thinking that we had a problem, we decided to test all the buildings. So we tested, well, 10, multiple sites in all 10 buildings. And what came back was, of course, the results that we showed you. Actually, Pleasant Valley came back as well. So that was in the spring of 16. We thought potentially we could mitigate it, because it seemed like the lead was perhaps in the fittings of the water sources in those areas. So our, some of our maintenance staff were able to remove some of that. And so then we had it retested in, essentially in August. And it still came back a little bit better, actually, at Clodchester School. It was above what they, it was below what they call actionable. But nevertheless, we thought, you know, we're going to, we're just going to close off that source of water, because that's where kids went and took their medication. So we gave them bottled water for that purpose. And the other place.
You're referring to Clodchester?
Clodchester, yeah. I'm sorry. And then the other, the others, so there were only two, at least two there still existing. The other was a water fountain in the business hallway, so we shut that off. And then almost immediately put in the CIP. Because the idea was, we knew that we had to study it, and you're right, some of the pipes are sort of embedded in slabs, and we didn't exactly know how to address that. So that was put in in October of 16. It went through the budget process last spring. There were no funds that were allocated for the schools, the CIP. So then we, this August, we put it in again, essentially trying to answer the same question, the question you're trying to answer.
Can I just clarify something? So you retested in summer of 2016, and I thought, I heard you say Clodchester was below actionable?
It was.
But it says on here that it's still tested above acceptable levels.
I think what you're looking at here is.
It's this one.
Is the June. Oh, which one are you looking at?
It starts with April 2016 at the top. It's a short little half-page thing that we were given. I don't know when that came from.
Oh, my timeline. Okay.
I don't know if I, maybe I wrote it down wrong.
Yeah, no, no, you're right.
So the retesting then showed it's still above level. This is, the paper is correct. So it's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There was no improvement when you changed fittings.
There was a little bit of improvement, but not sufficient enough for us to say, whatever the maintenance guys did during the summer fixed the problem. So we knew we had the problem.
Okay. So then, we need to find out the source, so then we can decide where the money's going to come from to solve the problem. And in the meantime, there is going to be communication to staff to let them know which facilities they should not be using.
Correct.
And which facilities are restricted. And there's going to be signage so that even the students will understand what is appropriate to do and what is not appropriate to do.
That's right.
So that's where we are right now.
Right. It's fairly simple, because the source, the problem at Clodchester was in the nurse's office.
Right.
The nurse's office already has a big water dispenser thing. So we know the kids take, they still use the sink to wash their hands and so forth, but they have the water there. In the case of the high school, that water fountain has been shut off. And the two bathrooms that are near it, which I guess one could presume might contain lead, we will make sure tomorrow immediately that signage will be posted not to consume the water. That's not potable.
And how, if the faculty are not watching this evening, how will they be notified that there's an issue with those particular sinks?
We'll send an email.
Okay.
Or I'll speak to the principal tomorrow and make sure.
And do you have any idea what kind of timeframe? I don't know how long something like this would take to do. How long will it take for plumber, mystic air quality, Groton Utilities, whoever you're going to hire to check it?
Oh, the testing?
No, to pinpoint the problem, so you know the source. I know it's hard to know.
Well, I think it'd probably be smart to do the testing again, because it's been a year and a half. And then, once we figure it out, that, in my mind, maybe I misunderstood. In my mind, a good portion of that CIP money was to try to figure out exactly what you just said.
Okay.
Where is it and why is it there?
Councilor Parker?
I'm just slightly concerned that we didn't, you said there was a retesting in October 2016, after you guys replaced everything.
Right. Well, the retesting, the retesting was in August. We got the results in October.
Well, okay, it was in August, okay. But why didn't we retest again before the school year started?
Well, we tested, we tested right at the beginning of the school year in late August.
Not of this year, does not look like.
Oh, no, not this year, I'm sorry, in 16.
The end of 16?
Right.
But we didn't test in 17, knowing that we had an issue with the water?
That's right.
I have a big concern about that.
Yeah, me too. That's why we put the CIP in immediately.
But once you didn't get the CIP, you could have retested the water, at least to know, have a baseline to figure out where it was.
Sure, yeah, that's true. Well, we're retesting right now.
All right, and is it, who is doing the retesting? Because at one point you said you reta, who retested the water?
Well, we've asked Groton Public Utilities to do the retesting.
Mr. Burke?
The original locations of testing were randomly selected.
No, 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 no. The locations for the testing were done in consultation with Groton Public Utilities.
Okay. And then you retested the same ones. Will those exact ones be redone, or will you be adding any to be tested?
Yeah, well, I'll probably work with them again. My knowledge, and Sam will work with his staff, we'll make sure it's comprehensive.
If I might, I have to apologize that I didn't make things very clear the other night. I did use the term random, and I didn't mean it in the sense that we were just doing it willy-nilly. The Groton Public Utilities, for instance, suggested that we test a site that's very close to where it first comes into the building. And Councilor Morosik asked the other night about water coming into the building, how much was coming into the, how much lead contamination was. At each of the buildings, they did a site near the school building to see what the readings were. And for instance, Fitch High School, they did it at the Public Works Department. And those readings over there were 0.001, as compared to, and most of them were at Fitch High School, with the exception of that one fountain in the business wing.
You're in line. Councilor Franco, O'Bree, and then Morosik and Zepari.
So when we got the CIP and we were discussing it, actually, the CIP requested that fixtures be changed. That was in the CIP. And then we had another issue, because the fixtures had been changed. And then we went into another issue of, there was no testing after the fixtures were changed. So this is where a lot of the confusion began.
Yeah, yeah.
So in the CIP, it actually said you wanted to change fixtures.
Yeah.
So that's.
I took your wise advice today, and I watched the entire show.
So that's one of the things. So it wasn't just to come for.
Right.
So when you read the paperwork, it said changing the fixtures.
Yeah, yeah, right.
One other question I have is on Clodchester School. On the map that you had given us, there's one red dot, and then there's three yellow dots. And it says GPS precautionary. What does precautionary mean with those yellow dots?
What we did was, in the nurse, well, again, as we spoke about this afternoon, those are so close to the water source in the nurse's office, with, those are some small, you know what?
They were former kindergarten rooms.
Yeah, they were. I actually have it annotated here. So in the room across the hallway there, where the yellow dot, just before, just above where it says main entrance.
Room one.
Room one, yeah. The fountain, there was an actual fountain there, and that was removed. But the sink remains operational, so the children can wash their hands. In room two, the fountain was shut off, and again, the sink, the sink remains on so kids can wash their hands. And in room three, the whole water source was totally removed.
Councilor Franco, I'm going to jump in and ask a quick question. So are those sinks signed, and do the teachers know that they should not be ingesting that water?
Not until, well, I don't know that, but they will be tomorrow morning.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Councilor Franco? You asked my question. So we are on, Councilor Morosik, oh no, Councilor O'Bree, and then Morosik and then Zepari.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering, the wing that the red mark is in at the Fitch High School, do you know when that was built?
Probably original to the building, so I'm going to have to defer to Councilor Zepari.
What's that?
When was the building built?
1958.
57, 58. That's what I thought. That's what I thought. So, I'm assuming that it was, the fixtures were probably installed in that year. I believe they're original.
Okay. And my understanding is that the plans for that wing are no longer available?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Morawick, and then Zepari.
Just looking at this diagram of the school here, the plan, it appears to me that the mains, the main water lines are running in the hallway, and that the tap-offs go into the walls, and that's what's buried. But it seems like you could go up, those ceilings are drop ceilings of some sort?
Talk to him, I have no idea what you're talking about.
Drop ceilings?
Yes.
Okay, so you should be able to get up into that drop ceiling, and there should be valves up there that will isolate that line. And it seems like you just have to run another copper line from that main. You could top, you could stopple it, and then run it down. It doesn't seem like it's a major problem if that's, you know, if they do run in the main in the corridors. I can't see why they wouldn't. Because the way this is laid out, it seems like that's where your-
Well, you know what, we'll have our plumbers-
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, more than one. But we will have our plumber take a look at this. Yeah, it's a reasonable suggestion.
Yeah.
We want to get it fixed, and we want to be sure people are comfortable with the drinking water.
Counselors Zepari and then Heath.
Could I make one correction before we move on, please?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Counselor O'Bree, the other night, when I was speaking about plans that are not available any longer, I didn't mean that particular wing alone. I'm not positive whether that one's there now or not, but some have disappeared over the years for one reason or another, the fire, or the moves from one building to another. But there are also as-built, which Mr. Morawick knows all about, as-built plans that may be available. But a lot of times in school situations, because they're such large projects, the as-bills are not as accurate as one would hope they would be. So, the as-built says that if something is here, we haven't gone into that detail yet. I was hoping to work that out if we got to the engineering stage, but, so, they may be there, or they may not be there, but some plans are available, some are not. But I didn't mean that those plans in specific for that particular wing were not available.
Thank you. Counselors Zepari, and then Counselor Heath.
I was going to say essentially what Counselor Morawick said. You know, as far as testing the water at the, where'd you say, Public Works?
Public Utilities.
Public Utilities.
Oh, no, where they tested before they came to Fitch?
Yeah.
Yeah, they tested at the closest facility.
But the thing is, you tested it in Fitch, and it showed that the water coming in was clear, because you had other faucets and outlets in the school that were free of lead. So, you know the water coming into the school is free of lead.
That's right.
The, it seems that you have some pipes embedded in walls behind brick, but there's no reason why you cannot disconnect them and just leave them in the brick, and as Counselor Morawick was suggesting, simply run new pipe-
Reroute it, yep, I got you.
And reroute it to those sites, and you should get by it. But you have to, when you disconnect them, you have to be sure that the water that's coming to that point is lead-free.
Yes.
Otherwise, you have to disconnect further up.
That's right.
Counselor Heath. Oh, I'm sorry, are we finished?
Yeah, I pretty much, the only thing, you know, the only problem I have is a request for $50,000 to study this problem, when the study can be made right in-house by good people.
Counselor Heath.
Question for the town manager. Senator Summers said that the state funding, I know there are bigger issues, but I'm just going to ask the funding question. State funding is only available if it's water coming into the building, but Representative Conley mentioned there are two sources of state funding available. Do you happen to know, does that apply to both?
I'm not familiar, I don't have that information.
I have, let me see if I can get through her email. We do know the Commissioner of Department of Administrative Services and her deputy, Costa Diamantis, that's who she was referring to.
Commissioner Curry, yes, is who Representative Conley spoke to, yes.
Yes, yes. And, to tell you the truth, I read it after I spoke to Senator Summers, so I was less inclined, these are the people that we begged to get the 80% funding, and we swore we wouldn't come back for 10 years. So, I didn't want to aggravate them too much. But, we could talk again, you know, if there's money. But of course, we don't know what it's going to cost to fix it, you know, that, I think the next thing we need to do is do the retesting, so everybody feels comfortable. And then, I think we need to figure out what the problem is. And then, when we have some sort of, one of the things, I now remember about Representative Conley, she said that the folks at Department of Administrative Services would want to know what the cost estimate is to fix the whole thing, and of course, we don't know that. That was the genesis of the CIP. But, you know, we'll keep poking away, and, you know, so when we get to the cost of rerouting or whatever, then we'll come forward, and if the state can help us with that, we'll certainly pursue that.
Thank you.
So, I had another question for you. I don't know the building well, I'm sorry, I'll get it from Counselor Schmidt. The wing where the sole red dot is, the one lead problem area-
Which, which school?
Fitch Senior High School.
Yep.
Is that also where the culinary department is? Do you have a culinary department at Fitch?
We do.
And is that the wing? And have they been notified? I'm not sure if it is or not, I don't, I don't know for a fact.
It's not around the corner, it's around the corner from there, but we would put signage in there too.
Okay.
Wait, wait, we tested the source of water coming into the kitchen.
In the kitchen, yes.
Not the kitchen, I guess you have like a department, you're competing with Grasso, by the way. You have a department where you're teaching kids culinary arts.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Koshmider, perhaps.
Yes.
Is that contained in that same vintage wing?
It's in the main hallway, heading in that direction.
Do you have a room number on the map? So, I'm looking at where the red dot is, 2813, 2812, 2808, 2807, all of those rooms at that end, the culinary arts that you offer your students. I believe it is, I think some-
No, I'm confused again, because it's beyond that wing. It's just beyond that, I would say it'd be-
Can you give me a room number where you think it is?
Would it be 2723 or 2724, maybe?
2723, 2724.
Yeah, it's over on the other side of that wing.
Okay. So, because if we look at the map and where the dots were tested, that seems to be the only area that was tested in that section of the building. So, the north, if I'm looking at this, the northeast corner of this map, there's only one test done.
We'll make sure that's tested. Yep, I got you.
So, to me, the most important thing is, this is a solvable problem, right?
Right.
And we can find the money somewhere to solve it.
Right.
But the most important thing is that the teachers and the students are aware of what's potable water and what's not, and the communication to them, so that everybody's kept safe-
Yep.
Until we can get it fixed.
Yep.
But I'm confident we can get it fixed.
Yep, I am too, yep, I agree with your analysis.
I just wondered if you have provided an alternate source of water for people who are thirsty, the students, the faculty, what do they do now? They have to go down to the library to get a drink of water?
I guess one on the main hallway.
Or to the arts gym?
Yeah, yes, they go to another, they go to another water source in the building.
But it just seems like we could have the supply that you see in so many business offices now.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we certainly can talk to the people in that area, and-
I think they're all here tonight.
We basically have said to people, if you, if you request bottled water, and of course, the color people have requested it consistently, so we'll talk to the people in that area.
Right, but not bottled water like this.
No, like a big, a big bubbled thing.
Right, big one, right.
Mr. Burke, wanted to say something?
Just going back to Counselor Heath's question, I was able to pull up the information on the two sources, two avenues of funding. One was a bonding request, and the other is DAS money for emergency code violations. But either way, kind of the first step is to get a plan and costs together, to see where you're at, so.
Counselor Parker, and then Franco.
I'm sorry, did you just say that Cutler requested special bottled water?
If I did, I didn't mean to, just-
You just said that.
I probably did just say that.
I'm just curious, can you find that out?
I can find that out, I'm going to ask myself, and I'm wrong. Cutler has perfect water, well, maybe not perfect.
So, did you mean Claude Chester, sir?
I meant Claude Chester, ma'am.
Okay. All right, just double checking.
Counselor Franco.
Too many, too many K sounds in this district, if I ask me.
All right, so, the kids at Claude Chester, you're saying that the yellow dots, the sink is still working-
Yes.
But they're kindergartners.
Yes.
They may not be able to read a sign.
Well, I don't know if they're kindergarten.
No, they were kindergarten rooms originally, and now they are special ed rooms down there.
Do you think they can read the signs?
I think so, but we'll talk to the teachers. We'll get the signs out tomorrow, and we'll get word out to the staff.
Okay. So, you had mentioned the plans, because one of the reasons you asked for money to do your study is because there were no plans. So, are you, can you look for the plans?
Yes.
In the summer, when you go to retest?
We're actually doing it right now.
You're going to start testing now?
Well, I requested it-
Today?
Well, I put in for it on Friday.
Let me, can I possibly make a suggestion? That we know at Fitch, the newer side of the building probably is going to be fine, because it's newer. The parts that were built in the 50s, and that have any kind of water source from the 50s, are definitely need, should be tested, all sources.
More thorough.
I liked your idea the other day, and when you asked me why I didn't test those sinks in those bathrooms, I think it's a good idea to go ahead and test those immediately, which we have plans for.
And I agree, and I think, like, the whole, anything beyond the library, that whole wing down that way, I mean, any kind of water source down there should be tested. That's just my opinion.
Right.
Because if you show one side that was built in the 50s, I think you should start testing everything to be sure.
Right.
Because as I've been told, some of the kids go to the bathroom and fill water bottles up, so I'm concerned about that.
Yeah.
That's it. And then I just, I will make a request on behalf of the students and faculty that work in that 2007, 2800 wing, if they could have bottled water as well. That way, they don't have to be concerned about their students. I don't know, it was fairly reasonably priced, I believe, he said $1,000 for a whole year. So, it would be very good to get them a source of water over on that end of the building as well. Are there any other questions? Has, have any questions been answered? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't look over here.
I have a separate question.
Counselor Schmidt, Counselor, is it on the same issue?
No.
Okay, Counselors Zepari, and then-
Just to comment on the proceedings that we're having here, it reminds me of the American crew team in the Olympics was losing regularly, and they couldn't figure out why, and they found that they had, they would show up with two rowers and seven coxswain. Here we have nine coxswain and you two sitting there. I think what we should be saying is, hey, you guys know what you're doing, go figure it out and fix it. But don't come to us and ask us for extra money for it. You should be able to fix it in-house.
Well, they should not be able to, and I think we should be willing to get them some money if they need to fix it, because you can't have flooded water in the schools. Counselor Schmidt.
Oh, at one of our meetings, it was said that there is a separate grant from the federal government that goes directly to the Board of Education and bypasses going through the municipality. And several people have approached me and asked me if there's a savings account, how is that being used? Doesn't seem to be reported anyplace.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And so, what is it from?
Sure.
What federal group?
Yeah, we do, we do report it. In fact, I reported it every year during the budget, public budget hearing, and it's actually in the budget book. The source of the money they're referring to is called Department of Defense Supplemental Impact Aid, meaning, there's impact aid, we know we get, until this bill goes through, God forbid, we get about $3.2 million from the Federal Education Department. And that's for any children who live on federal property, or parents work on federal property, including casinos. So, it's a very broad spectrum, people who work at EB and so forth. But, there's another fund, not from the Department of Education, but from the Department of Defense. And if you have at least 20% of the children in the district are military dependents, then the Department of Defense sends anywhere from $200,000 to $250,000 a year directly to the school system, to promote the education of those children. What we've done for the last five years that I've been here, we use the amount of money that we get for, typically for technology. That's how we've afforded the one-to-one initiative at the high school. We bought every student at the high school a computer, a phone book, a computer. It's also the source of money that the board is somewhat apprehensive about in the plan that Mary Granatowski referred to. The board will have to cut $1.8 million, so 1.3 of it, we believe, can come out of the health insurance reserve, and about $500,000 will come out of that fund, which will deplete about half of it. So, we're, it's the, it's sort of the only rainy day fund that the Board of Education has, but it's been managed very appropriately. And every year, we have a budget for that, and I'd be happy to share that with you next time I come.
And then perhaps $50,000 could come out of that fund?
It could, it could, that's true.
Right, would be available.
Yes, it could actually be used for anything, so you're 100% right.
Thank you.
Counselor Morawick has another question?
Yeah, I just made an observation, those are on dead lakes, those where you're having problems. Both of them, it may appear that you may have to put in a loop to keep that water flowing, because that's a dead lake, a lake, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah. You know, the longer I stay here, the more I'm understanding this problem, and Counselor Zepari has put me in the coxswain seat, and I'm ready to direct. Yes, thank you. Yeah, no, I mean, that's why it's good to talk to engineers.
Well, thank you for coming out, and would you please keep us updated as to the progress when your test results come back?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
And you'll be letting all the teachers know tomorrow in the affected buildings what they should be doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we are on to 2018-01-08, filling the Assessment Analyst Associate position in the Finance Department. This is Attachment Four. Attachment Three. It's Attachment Three. I've got everything there, all the assessment stuff is here. Three, four, five is all together, so. All right, and we have Director Landry back, and we have Ms. Gardner with us assisting this role.
Yes, I have Mary Gardner here, she's the assessor.
Okay.
And the Assessment Analyst position has recently, after 13 years of service, notified us of his intent to retire on June 1st. And this position's primary responsibilities are related to personal property. On my referral, you'll see that I've made note of several of the duties that he does, but, and again, most of it is related to personal property. But he also does the auditing of the manufacturing and machinery and equipment exemptions, that was something that was formerly done by OPM, that they have now pushed it down to the states, and he absorbed doing those duties. And with EB and Pfizer, and several smaller, that's quite an extensive task, too. He also handles the aircraft registration, along with the personal property. And I do feel that this is a very critical position in the Assessment Division. If this position were not to be filled, the duties would have to go to others in the division, and we would not be able to just stop doing what he's doing now. He does bring in, goes and visits businesses, he researches trade names to try to find new businesses, goes out, inventories their personal properties, so he is a moneymaker for the town of Raleigh.
Okay, so, that was informational, so then- So then, we are looking at Attachment 3, which is 2018-0094 and 0095, which are the job descriptions, I believe, next. And I believe the action is required, let's see. You're gonna need us to direct the manager to fill the position, correct, Mr. Burke?
Correct.
And then you need us to approve the two job descriptions?
Correct.
Okay, so, is there any discussion on directing the manager to fill the Assessment Analyst Associate position? This is the Attachment 4. Councilor O'Gree?
I have no idea where we're at, but...
Can I help you?
Thank you. This is a position that we had before, and you're just filling it again, or is this a new?
No, he's worked for the town for 13 years, and he's just decided to retire. So I'm just looking to fill, when he retires, I'm looking to fill that position with a new hire.
So, would you like to make a motion to direct the manager to fill that position?
I'd like to make a motion to have the manager fill that position.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of directing the manager to fill the Assessment Analyst Associate position, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Councilor Heath has the giggles this evening. Okay, so now we're looking at the job descriptions. And we have, I was going back and forth when I was comparing the two of them. So I'm assuming the ones that have the revision date Xed out are the new ones?
Yes.
Okay.
I have two job descriptions here. We like to look at the job descriptions, you know, whenever an opening comes up, but also, and that's for the Assessment Analyst Associate. And we just wanted to clarify the duties that the position is actually doing. And the Assessment Tech, well, the Analyst Associate has not been updated since 2004, and the Assessment Technician since 1995. So I thought this was an opportunity, since I was going to be filling a position, to take a look at the job description and see if we needed to make any changes so it properly reflects the duties that the person is going to be doing.
So it seems much more detailed than the original one?
I changed the format. The old format was more of a paragraph, so I tried to put it in a bullet format, and I thought it made it a little bit easier to read. And maybe it's a little bit more detailed.
So are there questions about the two job descriptions?
And there's no pay change, correct?
No.
Yeah, it doesn't change, just clarifying, that's it.
Okay, so then we need...
Public hearing.
I don't think we need a public hearing, we just need to recommend for resolution the change in job description. So is there someone who would like to recommend for resolution the change in job description for 2018-0094, Assessment Analyst Associate?
Second.
Moved by Zepary, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Schmidt. All those in favor of recommending for resolution the change in job description, say aye. Opposed? Abstaining, so moved unanimously. And now we're on to the Assessment Technician. And again, you can see the two, the differences here, and we need to do the same thing, just recommend for resolution to accept the change in job description. Moved by Parker, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Zepary. Is there any discussion on recommending the acceptance of the change in job description? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Okay, so those are set, I think, is that all, ladies?
That's it for tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we are now, oops, sorry, on 2018-0097, Bill Memorial Library Neighborhood Assistance Act Program Application, and this is Attachment 5. That's why Mr. Bronx is here. Okay. Hello?
Good evening.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about what we have in front of us here?
Sure. I think the referral basically provides most of the detail, but in summary, the state has the Neighborhood Assistance Act, and what it does is give tax credits to companies who donate funds to this particular program. And certain organizations who qualify can submit applications for certain projects. The state does require that municipalities receive these applications on their behalf, and somewhat review and screen them, and eventually send them to the state. And we have one submittal this year. We usually receive one, sometimes two annually. This particular one is from the Bill Memorial Library. We do have Wendy Connell here, the director of the library, in the event that you have any questions, but this is a relatively straightforward request. They do, the state does break the program into two different parts. The energy conservation programs actually qualify the business to gain the largest tax credit. That would be 100%. So, this is a energy conservation project involving the replacement and improvement of the library's HVAC system. The value of the project is $63,600. The timing of the project is basically March 2019 through September 2019. I've been advised it will not take that long. Our obligation is to do the intake, as I stated, do the initial reviews, try to shepherd the request through the council, which requires several steps that are stated within the referral. And then, assuming there's an approval, and it's granted by the state, we are responsible for requesting the documentation from them post-project completion. That involves looking at some of their financials, and ultimately submitting the final paperwork to the state. So, really, the initial action requested is to schedule the public hearing on the short term, and then eventually, after that, is to approve the request.
So there's a whole timeline laid out on the first page of Attachment 5 with the benchmarks we have to meet. So, are there questions about this?
So, basically, we're on step one, and then there are four steps to follow. Six.
Total is six.
Step two is to make a motion for a public hearing, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing and approve the proposal for the energy efficiency improvements to the Bill Memorial Library under the 2018 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act.
Second. Moved by Heath, seconded by Parker. Is there a discussion? I don't really, let's see. Town schedules a public hearing on 5/1/2018, is that correct, Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Why do we have to go?
So do we need that in the resolution?
The resolution to schedule a public hearing will be approved at the main meeting. The actual public hearing will be June.
Okay, so we're not picking a date tonight, we're just putting this on the next town council?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilor Schmidt?
Do they have a sponsor for this already? Because I'm trying to understand, they evidently...
Grotten Utilities.
Grotten Utilities. They're not a nonprofit themselves?
I know, I can't answer that, actually, but I do know that they have sponsored projects in the past that have sufficed.
I'd like to see the libraries going after grants like this. I think it's great. It helps, helps everybody out in town, so we appreciate you looking for the grants. Anybody else? Okay, so no further discussion. All those in favor of alternative two, scheduling a public hearing to approve the proposal for the energy efficiency improvements under the Neighborhood Assistance Act, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining, so moved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Bronx. All right, we are on to 2018-0092, Chelsea Grotton Foundation Grant for the Library, and this is Attachment 6. Thank you for labeling the attachments, it makes life easier. So... Looking at the library, I don't know if anybody's here from the library, or Mr. Burke, did you want to just address what they're doing here?
Sure. They're just looking, the library's looking for permission to apply to Chelsea Grotton Foundation for a grant for $6,406.40 to replace furniture in the children's activity room. There'd be eight tables of adjustable height that would be put in, and 32 chairs of various sizes. No match requirements, it would be 100% grant.
That's great.
And that, the current furniture's back, is existent from the 1990s, so.
It's still a nice space. Councilor Zepary?
I move that we approve the submission of the application for grant funds.
Second. Moved by Zepary and seconded by Parker. Is there discussion on alternative one? Councilor Atwater?
At the beginning, it says the, where did I see it? The grant request is due on April 20th. Is that gonna be a problem?
It will be reviewed in May.
Yeah, I think, I think what they're doing is probably going ahead, and they'd have to withdraw it if you didn't approve it, is my understanding.
Okay.
When this does happen, when we run into a timeline issue, that's usually what we do, is we say, well, submit it, because you can always just not go forward with it, so.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so all those in favor for 2018-0092, alternative one, approving the submission of the application for grant funds, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining, so moved unanimously. 2018-0110, supplemental appropriation to the Recreation and Senior Activities Fund, I believe, yes. Ms. Riley is with us this evening, and this is Attachment 7.
Hello. How are you?
Good. What would you like to tell us about?
Well, we are seeking approval of a supplemental appropriation from the Rec. and Senior Activities Senior Programs Unassigned Fund for the purchase of a recumbent stepper. We had a treadmill which was bought in the early 2000s. The motor went, we looked into having it repaired, and the cost of repairing is half the cost of purchasing new. And they could not guarantee that if they repaired it, another major part of the treadmill wouldn't go because of the age. So, we surveyed our membership and asked what they would like, and they're looking for some more variety, so we settled on a recumbent stepper, and the cost is approximately $2,450.
And what I just wanted to point out before we started discussing is the last paragraph before the alternatives describes the source of the funds. So this is money that they have coming in, in excess of their expenses. So this is not anything being raised by new tax dollars, this is from their special revenue fund.
Correct.
Councilors of Perry?
If you did not spend this money on the new exercise equipment, would it be available for you to spend on other things in the senior center?
Yes.
What other things could you do? Is it virtually for anything that you have to deal with in the senior center?
We, we usually use this kind of for emergencies. We had money that, when we had ovens go, we replaced, when we had ovens go in the kitchen, we replaced that. So usually, it's a way to replace larger pieces of equipment.
Councilor Schmidt?
I wonder, is that like the new step, or is it the new step?
Yes, it's like the new step, but you're sitting, you're not standing.
I really like that.
Councilor Rossick?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the supplementary appropriation of $2,450 from the Rec. and Senior Activities Senior Programs Fund balance to the Senior Programs.
Second.
32405.
Moved by Rossick, seconded by Franco. I just wanted to note there's a balance, they'll have $75,000, oh, they have $75,000 in that fund now. So this is by no means gonna deplete the fund. So all those in favor of approving alternative one or recommending it for resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, so moved unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to 2018-0098, this is Attachment 8. This is a resolution in support of Senate Bill 103, permanently banning the disposal of fracking waste in Connecticut. And this is something that came to us via CCM. CCM recommended that all of the municipalities ask for support of SB 103, which is why we're doing this. Who would, who do we leave off? Who wants to read?
Just try.
I don't know. You'll read it, thank you, Councilor Parker.
Resolution in support of Senate Bill 103, permanently banning the disposal of fracking?
Fracking. Fracking, yes.
Waste in Connecticut, whereas the hydraulic fracturing is a technique whereby rock is fractured through the use of a pressurized liquid in order to achieve an increased volume of natural gas or oil. And whereas fracking waste water is toxic with no way to filter or treat the water to enable it to be safe. And whereas, according to a John Hopkins University study, fracking waste chemicals are linked to migraines, fatigue, chronic nasal/sinus symptoms, as well as premature births and high-risk pregnancy. And whereas the state of Connecticut currently adopted a moratorium in 2014 to prohibit the storage or disposal of fracking waste in Connecticut. And whereas Senate Bill 103, currently under consideration, would permanently ban accepting, handling, and disposing of hydraulic fracturing, fracking waste in Connecticut. And whereas Senate Bill 103 will help to protect Connecticut's potable well water and prevent future financial liability for the state. Now therefore, excuse me, now therefore be it resolved that the Grotton Town Council fully supports Senate Bill 103, and be it further resolved that the Grotton Town Council requests that the bill be called for a vote to help protect Connecticut's environment and financial future. I say move.
I'll second. Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. Is there a discussion on this? Councilor Atwater?
I just have one personally. I'm assuming that if we, if we pass this, that doesn't necessarily mean fracking is banned. This is just supporting the bill.
Correct. CCM asks municipalities to contact their legislators and offer resolutions in support in order to get it passed through the general assembly. Did you want to add anything, sir?
No.
Anyone have questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2018-0098, the resolution in support of Senate Bill 103, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. So moved unanimously. 2016-0255, this is Attachment 9. Okay. Purchase of tablets for the town council. We have two alternatives. Ms. Bresnan is gonna talk to us about this. Proceed with implementation of electronic meeting documents or do nothing and continue to generate hard copies. What would you like to tell us?
As you may know, our legacy Agenda and Minutes Management System, which is called Legistar, has come to the end of its useful life. And we have purchased and are in the process of beginning to implement a new product. And as, as part of that, it's going to actually result in some pretty significant changes. Right now, it's only the council and the RTM that use our Legistar system, but the new system will be used by all of our land use agencies, by our Parks and Rec committees. It'll be expanded throughout the town. What that means is that that information from that new database, because of the way that it's available now, all minutes, all agendas, all agenda packet information will be available, not only to councilors, committee members, but also the public electronically. So it really expand our, our ability to, to get information out to the public. Our projected go-live date at this point is June 1st. The existing information in our Legistar system will be, or has been, converted to searchable PDFs, so we won't be losing anything. Legistar we started with in 1997, so all of the histories, all of the attachments that are already in that system will be converted and available as archived information in the new system, so we're not losing anything there. But it also requires, going forward, some decisions by the town council about how you would like to receive your information. I've given you a packet of information, that the, the large packet is basically a mirror of tonight... a packet of information. The, the large packet is basically a mirror of tonight's agenda package, just to give you an idea of what the new look is and how the new packets will be put together. All of our particular referrals will now have a cover sheet similar to the one that I provided for this issue tonight. And then the second item that I gave you is actually a screenshot of an information portal that will appear on our website. So, you'll be able to see, for example, and the public will be able to see, the next three upcoming meetings, the last three meetings. They'll be able to access, sorry, that's this one. They'll be able to access the minutes, the agendas, and the packet materials directly from the website. What the committee members or the council members will receive is a completely indexed and bookmarked PDF file. So, your entire agenda packet now will come with very accessible bookmarks to every portion of the agenda, so you can jump from section to section on the agenda easily, if you choose to do it electronically. It should make it a lot easier to maneuver through the agenda, especially if you choose to take things out of order, because you have these bookmarks and attachments easily accessible. So, in order to move forward, if the, if the council decides that they would like to begin receiving their documents electronically, one of the benefits of this new system is that the packets can be viewed on any device. Certainly, a tablet is probably the easiest, but laptops, PCs, even phones, you can view these on. Wouldn't recommend it on a phone, but it can be done. One of the things that I would really like the council to do is to review our current referral list. It's very extensive. As much of that that we can take off for now, which will allow us to have a, kind of a clean break from Legistar and then going forward with ProVox, that would be great, if you could, if you, it's not to say those things are going to go away permanently, but we would just have to reintroduce them as new agenda items once the new system is up and running. Again, if you decide to go electronic, we need to have a discussion about what kind of devices you either have or would like to have, and if it requires purchasing for some or all of you, identifying a funding source for that. Certainly, we still have the ability to do hard copies, but as much as we can go electronic and digital, I think the cheaper it will be. I don't know if any of you have a desire to be able to annotate your agenda packets, take notes directly on your tablet, for example, notes that you can save, again, electronically. That makes a difference in the type of software that we put on the devices. And then lastly, just hopefully, you know, your, your willingness to get together in a training session and maybe work through a couple packets to make sure that everyone's comfortable with not only the hardware, but how the Adobe software would work.
If... Okay, Counselors Zepari and then Parker?
This will require a new appropriation of funds.
If the, if the, if counselors choose to have the town purchase devices for them, yes.
Why wasn't this presented in the budget?
I assume primarily because we weren't sure where we were going to be with the project. We've been working on this for a year, and it's really only, I would say, in the last month that the final details have come together to the point where we believe we're ready to go.
Okay. And what will it cost to purchase the tablets?
Unfortunately, the last time that we went out and did cost estimates for the tablets, it was in 2016, so we would have to update them, but the best guess is approximately $500 each.
$500 each for the tablets?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
If, if we went to the tablets and we made our own notes, does that sit in a cloud? Is that, how is that going to be, is that become property of the town, the notes and stuff, or we make notes on it?
No, your, your personal notes are not subject to FOI.
Okay.
And, and those, those personal notes would be in a file that you could save, that would not be subject to FOI.
Mr. Burt, Murawski, Franco?
I was going to say, the, the other reason I didn't put this into the budget is because we were nearing going live. It would fall into this budget, and we have plenty of money. It's not a lot of money. We have money in the contingency fund for it. So, it would just fall into this budget, and it wouldn't be a, it's not hard to do, if you're interested in it.
Counselor Murawski, then Franco, and then...
I like hard copies. I really do. We have, we have lots of paper around, and it's handy to have, to go through it and flip it around, whereas we'll be sitting there looking at tablets and maybe not paying attention to doing the things we should be doing. It's distracting. I don't carry a phone, except when I travel, because it's distracting. And I'm against this. I, I think, I think if we're going to do it, or if the other, the other counselors feel comfortable about this, this should be a test period. We shouldn't just go into it. We should, we should slowly go into it with maybe a test period to see if everybody else feels comfortable with, you know, soft copies or so. I don't. I don't particularly like it. But I, I, you know, I, I think that's, you know, your study and all the information that you're going to put in on, on the site, so that everybody can have it. I think that's a good idea.
Counselor Franco?
So, let's just say we use an electronic device. We come here and have a six-hour meeting. Do we have anywhere to charge any of these while we're working?
That is one of our challenges. No, there is no, you would, you would have to make sure your devices were fully charged when you came, because there's no electricity available at this point up at the AS.
So, so, I'm going to jump in here. I'm sitting here with my iPad, my phone. I'll do a charter revision. I sat with my MacBook, and I was very comfortable back and forth with everything. I'm a teacher, and we are one-to-one, and annotating PDFs is not easy. It's difficult to do, and I fear that we will, we will get caught in the process, as what Counselor Murawski was saying, and not be focused on the content of what we're trying to do. So, as much as I love my technology, I feel for this particular use. I don't feel like it would work well for this, like I'm sitting here with like 100 different things and everywhere. And the other thing I'm thinking, not, not only with the charging of it, the Wi-Fi, is the Wi-Fi hardened enough here that all of us could be on at the same time? The cloud, you know, is it going to be in the cloud? Is it going to be on the device? You know, what happens if somebody loses? There are so many issues when you're, when you're moving to technology for each individual person, that I don't know that, I'm not ready to go there yet for this point, but I do, you know, I'm not a, what is the word, a Luddite? I'm not a Luddite. Is that the right word?
It is personal preference.
Luddite, I'm sorry, Luddite. I pronounced it wrong. Counselor Schmidt?
Would we be able to print out a hard copy from the laptop or whatever we had, whatever device, so that you could see it beforehand and read through it, and is this what we do now, and send this to us?
You would receive a PDF just like you do now when I email you the, the PDF. If you wanted to print that out at home, you could, but also if you, if you, again, if your personal preference is to have a hard copy, we would print it as staff and provide it to you.
Right.
Counselor Zepari?
Even if we don't approve this today, would you give us training so that those of us who would like to cross-reference other committees and see what other, other people are doing rather readily can do that even outside of these meetings? I think that would be the appropriate place to do it in preparation for these meetings.
Excellent. Mr. Burt?
I was just going to mention, even if you don't choose to do it now, once we're into it and you start getting those PDFs on your home computers and see how you like them, you could always choose later, opt to get devices later, so. There's, there's no rush to do it right now.
And it just, okay. Counselor Obray, and then I'll talk again. And then, go ahead.
My turn?
Yeah.
In real estate today, I've gone through this same concept, and it was pretty hard at the beginning, and there's still things, and I make mistakes, but you can go out now with a small iPad and do your entire transaction. You can find the properties. You can find information on the properties. It's, it's unbelievable that I can now take my phone, if I want, and find what I need and do my transaction. You know, pull up the contract, fill out a contract. I mean, it, and it was hard to learn, and I still have more to learn, but you got to step into it. You can't say, oh, I don't think I can do this. I got to read this paper. I read everything on my iPad now at home. You know, I pull it up and I read it, and I just find it easier. So, but you got to just step in. You got to just say, okay, this is the world we live in, and I need to adapt.
Counselor Heath?
I agree with Leanne in stepping in and embracing technology, but because I'm a numbers guy, I add up the numbers. So, it costs a dollar for us to receive this packet. Oops, sorry. So, for 52 weeks out of the year, to do nine packets, if I did this right, $468 or $500, which would be one iPad. So, it would take 10 years for that to pay off, which I think I, an iPad, I have one that's three years old, and it's, it's done. So, I don't think that that works unless there's a savings in time or somewhere else. I'm just looking at it from a money perspective or numbers.
The costs involved, I, last time we talked about this issue, I did estimate paper, mailing, et cetera, and I think we were around $1,800 a year to do a packet. Of course, that doesn't include staff time, and, and multiplying that over now multiple, you know, there is a cost savings, but again, it's personal preference. It's an alternative. It'll be there for you. It'll be there for the public. Like the town manager said, there's, there's no needs, reason for you to, to make a decision necessarily. It's just if you want to move forward, then we need to start having these discussions. The primary thing is getting the, getting you to maybe go through the referral list and, and clean that off and help us get ready.
And I also put my questions in a separate pad, so even though I've got this beautiful packet, all my questions are here labeled, so that I can just fire them off.
I see the value in it being historically, to be able to, to be able to go in and search things very easily and find things very easily. I think that's going to be amazing for everybody. Just, you know, before we were all on council, we'd be looking things up, and we'd be digging through, and we'd have to call people and ask people to help us. So, now people individually are going to be able to search on their own, so I think that's great. I'm not prepared to do this right now. Again, I don't, I don't feel like it would benefit me at this point to do it, but that's not to say if you don't, if you want to bring your own devices and start playing with it. I certainly will play with it on my iPad. I'm not going to bring my MacBook here, my, but I will play with it on my iPad and see how it works out and go from there. But I'm not prepared to authorize moving forward with it right now. I don't know what the pleasure of the rest of the council is at this point. Counselor Atwater?
My only question was, when we first became counselors, there was some talk about not having your iPhone or your cellphone on the, on the table, because you might be communicating with other counselors and quote-unquote talking behind their back or something. Is this going to be an issue if we have devices on our, in front of us?
I don't, I don't think so. I think there are other people that do that. Do you have any experience with this?
Well, I can only speak from my own experience. My former board actually went to iPads, just dumb PDFs, though, not, not smart ones. And, yeah, obviously, you can have optics. You can have someone who thinks you might be doing it.
Right.
But it's usually pretty obvious when someone's really typing a message out versus, you know, just kind of scrolling through and looking for stuff.
So, and there's, there's all kinds of different devices. There's, the Surface Device might be more better, might be better than an iPad as far as Adobe goes, because they tend to fight. So, there's a lot of considerations. So, what is the pleasure of the council for this one? We have alternative one, provide with implementation of electronic meeting documents, including purchasing devices, and scheduling training, or do nothing and continue to generate hard copy agenda packets for counselors. Someone like to refer, what would you like to do?
Well, I'd like to, the alter, alternative, yeah, you know what I'm saying. I'd like to proceed with the training, and if everybody gets comfortable enough, then we could go forward with the iPads, but I think we definitely should go forward with the training.
So then...
Using our own, you know, whatever we have.
For clarification, you'd like alternative one, but we're going to strike including purchasing devices?
Right.
Is that acceptable to do?
Or delay it. I would delay it. My personal opinion.
So, proceed with implementation of electronic meeting documents, delaying the purchase of devices.
If necessary.
If necessary, and scheduling training for town councils. I think the training is a good idea to do. That way, we can get comfortable with it. Is there a second, or are you seconding?
Yeah, and I'd like to comment a few minutes.
Okay, so, Oprah suggests alternative one with that amendment. Seconded by Zepari. Yes, Counselor Zepari?
The only thing I wanted to clarify is if we do that, we will still be getting the hard copies.
Yes.
Of the agenda.
Yes.
Okay, so all those in favor of the amendment to alternative one, which includes delaying the purchase but scheduling the training, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. Thank you. So, we are on to 2018-0115, which is, oh, may I ask one more question? I'm not sure how we handle referral deletions. Are you going to have that on another agenda for us, and we'll go through, or do we need to do something separate in order to do that?
Well, it's entirely up to you. I included the referral list, thinking this might be a short meeting, but if you'd like to delay it or do it at a special meeting, that's fine, too. You'd like to all review it individually?
I, I think we would like a chance to go through it a little bit more. So, it's, what she's referring to is directly after the item we were just talking about. The referral list is here, and if you could each individually take a look at this and see which ones that you're comfortable deleting and make a note of that, and then Mr. Burt can have it put onto a future agenda, and we can get that cleaned up, so that it's, the movement is a little bit easier. Okay, so we are on to the adoption of the illicit stormwater discharge ordinance, and where is the, looking for it?
Nothing.
I think at this point, it's just doing a motion and move forward. We have the public hearing, and then we'll have the resolution for next week.
Okay, so, 2018-0115, we recommend for resolution, the adoption of the illicit stormwater discharge ordinance, correct?
Correct.
So moved?
So moved. Second?
Atwater, seconded by Murawski. All those in favor of recommending for resolution 2018-0115, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Consideration of committee referral items as per town council referral list, are we set on this? I don't think we have anything else, correct? Good. Any other business to come before the council, or come before the committee of the whole? Okay. Move to adjourned by Heath. Is there a second?
Certainly.
Seconded by Zepari. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously, and we are adjourned at 8:38. Thank you.